Good evening and welcome to the July 20th, 2016 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Let me note that alternate Commissioner Phil Wessel is joining us on the dais and participating this evening as not all Commissioners are present. Thank you for that. Next up is the approval of our minutes from July 6th, 2016. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July 6th, 2016 as read into the record.
Second? It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we got 3-0-1. Next up is the consent agenda. We have nothing on that and that takes it to sign permits and first one up is, or the only one up is sign-11483-2016, Saica signage at 106 South Frederick Avenue, the C.D. Quarter Development Zone Icon Sign Approval. Take it away.
Good evening. Staff is reporting tonight to present a sign permit application, sign 11483-2016. The applicant requests approval for a blaze sign which contains an icon of a person pursuant to section 24-212-J. All icon signs must be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. Such a property is located at 106 South Frederick in his own C.D. The proposed blaze sign is approximately 16.8 square feet and will be affixed to the front of the building facing South Frederick Avenue. Staff is supportive of the proposed icon sign and as such, staff recommends the Planning Commission grant approval of sign 1148-2016 Saica icon sign finding it to be in conformance with section 24-212 of the city code, one condition.
Just clarifying, what is this business exactly?
We had the same question when we got to use an occupancy permit. You'll probably see in your packets, there was a letter signed by the applicant kind of stating what their business is. They explained it as basically counseling and new age medicine, I guess, healing. We had a concern by the name of it that it could be considered fortune telling.
Okay.
But upon review of what they've submitted to us, it doesn't fall under our definition of fortune telling. They're not predicting, at least as they explained to us, they're not predicting someone's future through varieties of mediums.
Okay. It's good to know.
Yeah.
And then in case, in case anybody here was looking forward to that service.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. No questions?
Yep.
And for the record, is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to testify in this? I guess not. So with that, you've heard the recommendation. You go straight to it, right?
Yeah.
I think I heard it there.
Yes.
Is there a motion, please?
Yeah, I move that we grant approval of sign 11483-2016 Saica icon sign finding it to be in conformance with section 24-212 of the city code with the one condition that the sign be affixed to structural framing of the building.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, is announced.
Thanks.
Next up is a recommendation of the Marion City Council on X-7067-2015. And this is the request to annex approximately 23 acres of land known as the Johnson properties located at 12201, 12251, 12301, and 12311 Darntstown Road, Maryland Route 28 in Gaithersburg, Maryland into the city of Gaithersburg and rezone the four parcels from the county's R200 and NR0 of 7.75H, 45 zones to the city of Gaithersburg MXD zone with an associated annexation plan. Presenting from staff is Rob Robinson. I will remind you that tonight we are going to hear staff's analysis and recommendation and we will schedule for our next meeting our formal recommendation to Marion Council. Rob, take it away, please.
Good evening Commissioners. As the Chair mentioned, the applicant Johnson Family Enterprises and Three Amigos Real Estate LLCs submitted annexation petition X-7067 with the petition requesting annexation of approximately 23 acres. On the screen now are the properties shown and the addresses were mentioned by the Chair. As part of the annexation request, the applicant is also requesting a rezoning from the county's R200 and Neighborhood Retail .75, which is a .75 FAR zone to the city's MXD zone. And the annexation plan has also been submitted as required under the land use article with the applicant's petition. The plan revised and resubmitted in April of this year has been found to be substantially similar in uses and zoning by both the County Planning Board and by the Planning Housing and Economic Development County Council Committee with a full county council vote attesting to the same schedule for August 2nd, 2016. This evening, as the Chair mentioned in the introduction, is a recommendation of the Marion Council. I'd like to go over once again the role of the Planning Commission in this recommendation. And namely, it is three parts. The Planning Commission is to recommend on, one, does the annexation comply, or just the annexation and annexation plan comply with the city's master plan and goals such as those expressed in the adopted annual strategic plan? Two, is the proposed rezoning or zoning, in this case MXD, appropriate? And three, can the annexation plan itself be served by public facilities? The Planning Commission is required to review the proposed annexation and plan and provide a recommendation on these three points to the Marion Council at least 15 days prior to the required council public hearing. Just as a note, the public hearing has been scheduled for September 19th, 2016. Given that, I would now like to turn it over Joshua Sloan of ViCA and to Stuart Barr of Lurch Early representing the applicant with their presentation regarding tonight's recommendation.
Great. Thank you.
Out of respect I can stand or sit.
Respect. Whatever is more comfortable for you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stuart Barr with the law firm Lurch Early and Brewer. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this petition for annexation. As Rob mentioned, with me this evening, Josh Sloan from ViCA and Russell Johnson is also here. Russell and his family have owned this property for generations and at one time operated a nursery and garden center on the property for many years.
Remember it well.
The staff report was very comprehensive and we understand, as Rob mentioned, that the Commission is focused on a couple of very specific questions this evening, compliance with the zone and the master plan and so forth. And we're certainly going to address those questions. We did want to just take one minute because we think it would be helpful to the Commission to understand a little bit of the background and the context and how hard we've worked to build support for this plan. So Josh will describe very briefly the proposed plan and a little bit of the context and then I'll come back and discuss compliance with the master plan, the zone, and the strategic plan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so real quickly, I'm Josh Sloan with ViCA. I think you all know where the site is. We're in the northwest quadrant of Darntstown Road and Quince Orchard Road. The commercial property, oh, that's right. There's a commercial property and a vacant parcel right now. This is directly located along bus lines, bike friendly lines. So it's a kind of site where we were looking to bring in a mixed-use neighborhood that could take advantage of the transportation network and also the services and amenities that are worth, that are easily walkable from here to our east in particular. We've got Kentlands and we've got Shopping Center. And then we also have three schools at all, at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school within walking distance and then Quince Orchard, Knolls Local Park. So this is the site itself. It is 14 acres of vacant land except for a small warehouse area used by the Johnsons now. And then on the east side is the commercial property that has a Safeway, a CVS, and some other stores and a bank. As noted, this is a revised sketch plan. We've spent a lot of time working with the community, with agency staff and with your staff, to work on a plan that we could come up with as a best fit for this property, given the context and given the surrounding uses that we're trying to blend with. So what we've come up with is, you'll see on the north and the west side, areas of single-family detached lots. Those will back on to single-family detached lots. We'll transition from there to a large open space. This is a little over an acre as it's designed. One of the binding elements is that we provide a one-acre open space. That park will serve for various recreation, worth looking at things like a playground, but a lot of open space that's more flexible so that you could do soccer games, you could do frisbee, you could do things like that. Then we transition to townhouses. These are all alley-served rear-loaded townhouses that front on to a street or front on to open space. And then we have importantly, the new connections down to Darntstown Road and to the Stub Road in the northwest. So that's set up to increase the connectivity through the property. And then two new proposed connections to the commercial site on the east side. And we haven't done the full grading studies, but initial studies look like this is going to work well. We'll be able to come through to the south of the Safeway and with some minor reconfiguration of this entrance, you're at a signal. So you can travel east or west from there. And then we have the entrance on the west side, which is only a right-in, right-out proposed. But we wanted to make sure the full connectivity was there so that most of our trips, which we started looking at, can get access out on to Darntstown and head east towards, towards the primary, towards the primary jobs and shopping center. Thank you.
So that, that was the plan, quick summary. Turn it back over to Stuart.
So just to pick things up from there, we, we think this plan makes a lot of sense. It's a transitional property, as Josh described, located at the major intersection of two state highways. We think it's ideal for mixed use with the residential to the north and west, transitioning to the commercial uses and the institutional uses further to the east and the south. We focus very much on compatibility with single-family homes on the perimeter matching the existing single-family homes in the communities to the north and the west. We're envisioning a walkable community, walkable to retail and schools, as Josh said. And, and just very briefly, we spent a few months on our community outreach efforts to try to build support for this plan. We always try our best to work as hard as we can to build 100% support. We, wasn't quite possible in this case, but we're very proud of the support we did build. Very pleased with the comments from the county planning staff and the county planning board recently. As, as Rob mentioned, the county council fed committee voted to support the annexation. The full county council introduced it yesterday and then that will go to a vote on August 2nd. And so we're, we're very, very pleased with all the efforts and, and the revised plan. To get to the heart of the matter, the, the next slide shows the maximum expansion limits for the city. I think as everyone's aware, this, this property is within the MEL, shown on the west side of this slide. And then the next slide, in terms of the compliance with the city master plan, this, this proposed annexation complies identically with the city master plan recommendations. The property is within the MEL. It should be considered one mixed-use project as recommended by the city master plan. The master plan also says the current uses are appropriate and that if annexed, the property should adopt a commercial office residential land use designation and it's recommended for the MXD zone, which is what we're proposing. The next slide, please. So in terms of the compliance with the MXD zone, we think it is the appropriate zone as recommended by the master plan. There are existing commercial uses on the property and we're proposing residential uses, so there's a natural mixed-use set of uses already. Given the size of the property and the transitional nature and the proximity to two state roads, it makes sense as mixed use. We believe this annexation complies with the MXD zone provisions. We looked at the purpose clause carefully. As I mentioned, we're envisioning a very compatible project with the surrounding community, very walkable, with significant open space and recreation facilities and an appropriate amount of density. Next slide, please. In terms of the city's strategic plan, that recommends identifying annexation opportunities and this project will further the city's economic development goals. Will provide housing, including affordable housing and open space and recreation facilities as was described further in the staff report. And then finally, in terms of adequate public facilities, this property certainly can be served adequately by public facilities. For schools, the project passes both the county and city tests. For transportation, we've already studied that more so than ordinarily for a typical annexation case, just to get a head start on, on that study and we'll continue to study it further as we move forward. And then utilities and emergency response are adequate. So if the property is annexed, we, we believe this has the potential for a very well-designed, pedestrian-friendly, vibrant mixed-use community and we ask for the Commission's support and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
One, couple of quick little technical ones. In the plan, if you don't mind pulling up the diagram, and I will, I will, Rob will head you off. We're not going to comment on the plan per se, but I did want to get a sort of a technical question answered about the northeast corner. The arrow that points to, I think is essentially a dead-end road now in the adjacent neighborhood. What's involved in connecting that? Is there, is there a county agreement?
It would be working through to get the county access permit. A similar situation has found at Crown, we built to Coverly Drive, extended from Fields Road down. It had to connect to the stubbed out to Coverly Drive. So it's just coordinating with both Department of Permitting Services and Montgomery County DOT because that is a public road.
Is it a process by which, because I've seen this condition exist in other places in the county, and I don't know why, but I'm, I can suppose why, where there is a road that obviously should connect, but it's been blocked, you know, it, it isn't allowed to connect. So by, by virtue of allowing the annexation, is it, is it still a process by which they could deny the connection or?
Stuart may be able to help with this one.
For what it's worth, in our conversations, we believe the county will support the connection. We've had no indications that they'll decline to provide the connection.
Yeah, but they still have to approve it. It's not, it's not a given that it comes up to the property line and you just connect. They have to.
It probably does not, the actual payment probably does not come directly to the property line.
Yeah, okay. But I assume the, the connections and then finishing all that would be on the, on the developer of the new, the new side of this, right? Okay.
It is still.
Okay.
It is still.
It's still right to the line though?
It's, it's right near the line.
Near, near, if not on the line.
And usually, we actually have utilities stubbed into the property from that, so there's already been some thought about how the county.
Are there any utilities back there on that corner?
There are.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Rob, just for the audience's sake, as well as my own sake, could you go through the background a little bit as to why the city is annexing this? What's, what's the determining factor? I understand that the, it complies with our strategic plan and such, but a question comes up, I've had the question come up to me many times over the last couple of weeks. Why is the city doing this? What, what's the purpose in that?
Going back to, even though it was approved in 2009, the municipal growth element, as we were beginning to look at establishing our maximum expansion limits, staff at that point had targeted this property. As Stuart had mentioned in our strategic plan, we have the, the objective to pursue annexations that bring value to the city. That, that has carried through all the way back then. And when we saw this property, we saw a, a commercial center that had ability for growth and candidly, an undeveloped parcel that would afford us the opportunity to bring in additional residential. So that started there. That carried over into the 2009 land use where we were looking at that. And as we've worked through this process, there, just candidly, there are a number of values, one of which being, you know, bringing in affordable housing on single-family products on a side of town that has none. So there's social benefits, there's the economic benefits, you know, including the expanding of the property tax base. The sketch plan, you know, as Josh may or may not have mentioned, it's existing 90,000 square feet. Under this plan, it's allowed to go up to 10,000. Candidly, you know, some questions were arising, and Stuart had alluded to, there was a different plan originally submitted that was far more dense and it showed far more growth on here and additional uses, but it was determined at that point that it was substantially not in conformance with zoning or land use. Part of our goal all along was to bring this in, allow a good development to occur and not deal with potential five-year moratoriums or additional county conditions. So the plan you see is here. But, but we feel, you know, we felt in 2007, we first started looking at this and, and you know, essentially at the time of land use and even now, that this fulfills many city goals on a number of fronts.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to add, in addition to all the things that Rob just mentioned, we have a property owner who has come to us and has requested annexation. And that's, that's how we always operate. We do not go after properties. We respond to requests for annexation.
Thank you, John.
Good. Anything else?
I'll just pick my vague memories about our discussion about when we expanded the limits of the city over in this corner and the sort of the western node, this last little piece before the long stretch of single-family world that is Potomac and saying, look, you know, the core, the commercial core of Kentlands is really considerably far away, you know, from a pedestrian standpoint and, you know, the weight of residentials on this side of the Kentlands neighborhood. And that we were going to try and sort of expand out in this little, you know, pink node for a small and at the time, you know, I think, I think we, I remember us discussing it as somewhat, it was going to be modest. Neighborhood goods and services, sort of a grocery-based, you know, neighborhood center. Really, the piece that it was missing was something a little walkable around it, that there was a bit of a car gap between that little center that's there and, and the residences are down the street. So if we took control of it, we could create a little western node that was somewhat, you know, modest, but it would be a new western neighborhood goods and services.
And if I may expand upon Commissioner Hopkins, I mean, in one of the other discussions, as, as we're well aware, you know, catty corner to here is the McGruder, the other side that is just annexed in. We also viewed this, as is mentioned in the master plan, as a potential gateway. So by essentially controlling three corners with the other corner being a public high school, we have the ability, maybe not right now, but in the long term, you know, should both the Potomac, you know, and please, if somebody's listening at home, don't take this as we have plans and Trudy was beaten up enough worried about that. And even this one, they're only proposing currently 10,000, but let's say 20 years down the road, if somebody wishes to come back in and begin to relook, we then have the ability to do something bigger in essentially our southwestern corner.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No? And I'll remind you, this isn't a public hearing, it's really our discussion to get ready for a recommendation that'll come up at our next meeting. Although, Rob, I know you're going to recommend that our record or we will be accepting comments from the public for the next eight days to be included in the record, I think, with our recommendation. Is that right?
If you'd like me to do, you know, the recommendation.
Why don't you go ahead and do that and then we'll, we'll do some discussion.
So right now, staff recommends that the Planning Commission defer their recommendation for eight days to receive public comments until 5:00 PM on July 28th, 2016 and provide a formal recommendation on the annexation petition and annexation plan during their August 3rd, 2016 meeting. Further, staff recommends that the Planning Commission at that point recommends to the city council that the proposed X-7067-2015 annexation and associated plan are in compliance with the city's master plan and strategic plans based upon the findings presented in the staff analysis. The proposed zoning of X-7067-2015 to the city's MXD mixed-use zone is appropriate based upon the findings presented in the staff analysis. And finally, the proposed X-7067-2015 annexation and associated plan can be served by both existing and future public facilities based upon the findings presented in the staff analysis.
Great. So we don't have to finish the discussion tonight, that's related to the next meeting, but I do want to start with a couple of, just a quick kind of topics on the, on the annexation being served by public facilities. As I reviewed the staff's analysis, I don't see any concerns there for them to follow upon between now and our next meeting. I think we have pretty good evidence that the, the public facilities across all categories are, are adequate for this.
Adequate.
Fair. I did want to address a little bit, I had a couple of questions for you all to address between now and our next meeting on the MXD zone. And I'm not going to go without you guys agreeing, but I do want to make a statement that obviously MXD zoning is very flexible, but I think it also means we have a higher standard for what ultimately gets developed there. So I would like to see when that, that process develops into the SDP phase, really solid design guidelines, not just per funk redesign guidelines, but something that really is well thought out and of a, of a high quality. And that, that's really not just an also, but it's, I think will be central to making this an appropriate SDP. And that the, the integration piece with either the existing or the vision for the future commercial be very clear in that SDP. I think in our current sketch plan, there's a, there's just a sort of a line and some arrows, but really a little bit more thought about how that works at all levels, not only the particular, but pedestrian and views and adjacencies.
And everything else related to it.
Sure, services, things like that, so.
There's an opportunity here for bicycles too coming in from the back neighborhoods.
Bicycles, absolutely.
So that, that all of that is a part of that, that concept when you come to the SDP.
Again, not, not sort of also, but really central to this, because I think we're, we're at a point now in the city of the, in the history of our cities, mixed use, excuse me, mixed use development that we know we need to look for, for a little higher level of quality on a lot of it, right up front in the SDP process. But I think with that, the MXD makes sense.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to echo what you said, but also the integration of pedestrian right-of-way. Because you've got a high school right there and that high school spills out into that area. And with those homes being built there, kids are going to be walking. I mean, even if there's five or six students at the high school at the time, they're going to be walking and they're going to be able to walk across the street, want to make it pedestrian-friendly. And that's going to cause some problems, I think, and it's a county road and it's a very, very, very densely used highway, particularly in the morning. So I'm very, very careful about that and see how that integrates in.
Absolutely, okay. Any other concerns for you to look at for the MXD portion of this?
Yeah, I mean, I think you pretty much summarized the stuff, the things I was thinking of and a lot of them are things that we deal with when we get to the sort of schematic site plan phase. So I think, I think I'm good with where we are now.
Okay.
I, I think it is appropriate just, just to make the Commission aware, the statements being made, I, I think could very well be included in your recommendation. I don't think they're really necessarily discussions, you know, sort of the stuff we talked about the plan, but it is part of the justification for approving the MXD zone. So I think it would be appropriate on the 3rd i-if the Commission reiterated those as a reminder almost to include in their formal recommendation to council.
And maybe you could include that in draft of the recommendation, because we're going to send it forward as a.
CPC.
CPC, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. And then on the master plan goals, goals and the maximum expansion proposal, are there any concerns that you'd like staff to look at before we formally consider that recommendation?
I mean, I think my, I don't have any concerns about adequate public facilities or sort of how it fits in with the master plan. But the one thing that struck me was the, the point that was put up there, that the master plan states that this should be considered as one mixed-use site. And I think it ties back to some of the comments that were made about the integration of the site, that right now, looking at this plan, it looks like a residential, residential neighborhood scabbed onto an existing, you know, commercial mall. It doesn't strike me as a design for one, one integrated mixed-use site. So I think that's something that's going to need to be addressed to really stick with the spirit of, of what the, the long-range plan has.
Addressed, as we just mentioned, through the design guidelines, some of the situations we have with some of the other projects we have going on.
Through, through design guidelines, again, this is down the road, but what sort of work and improvements in reconfiguring needs to happen on the existing sites, existing commercial properties as far as landscaping and pedestrian access and signage and circulation to, to make them function as one mixed-use site and not a bunch of townhouses right behind the back of Safeway.
You know, that's right.
Yeah, the back of Safeway.
Yeah.
There's a design challenge here.
Good. All right. Any other, any other concerns you want to have?
No, I mean, if we give, assuming those are addressed when we get down the road, I think it's, it has a lot of potential.
Great. Anything more? Lloyd?
Yep.
Okay. I know we don't need a motion tonight, but I think we've got the discussion on the table for you all to follow up on for.
Just, just for clarification, what is the Commission expecting us to come back with specifically? Because I mean, obviously, I don't think we're at the stage to do design guidelines in eight days.
No, no. I, I think, and actually you said it, is what our communication and our record shows as part of our recommendation, I think you would include the points made tonight.
So I'd be happy then to submit a draft CPC.
Yeah.
For, for the August 3rd for review.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a pretty simple, small list of those things that we think are part of any MXD.
No, I, I, again, I think that they're totally valid and appropriate to place in the recommendation.
Great. I guess I, looking at this, I've got one more thing that maybe there's some clarification on and, and again, if this is something that should be deferred to the site plan phase. Just looking at the number of single-family residences that are proposed in those blocks compared to the lot sizes of the adjacent single-family residences, I'm a little curious what, what sort of lot size, what sort of density we're looking at for the single-family homes. And again, feel free to correct me if that's something that's, that's down the line and very easily deferred.
You're, you're thinking of like typology, whether the cottage is really whatever.
Yeah, you know, you've got, you've got a neighborhood of one typology, you've got townhouses and you've got single-family residences bridging the gap. Are they, you know, how, how big are the lots? Are they crammed in next to each other or are they? And that is getting, that is getting into the more design site plan. And that is getting, that is getting into the more design site plan.
Yeah, and I think some of these issues, it was looking at, you know, again, states pretty clear under the land use article, you know, you get 150% of existing things. So all told, as mentioned in the staff analysis, you know, they're allowed a total of 111 units under that. These are 110. I believe, you know, Josh and Stort and the Johnson family sat down, because again, they have to find something that's somewhat marketable. I don't think we really know at this stage, so this is, this is the upper limit, candidly. They may, once the time comes and they bring on a builder, they may choose to do, you know, less than 16 in the one strip in order to hit a higher price point, or they may try to figure out how to maneuver the 16. So it's understood what you're saying, but that is more of a schematic development plan issue when we really get preliminary subdivision.
And I think the design guidelines should be, should address that. Obviously, just like MXD, there's an additional burden for denser, you know, cottage-like single-families, that there's some additional design burdens that go into that kind of property that want to be covered in a SDP's, you know, design guidelines that we'll definitely want to see, I think we're saying, which makes sense.
Good. Anything else tonight? All right, so we will look forward to that at our next meeting, and anything else we need to do?
No, again, just to reiterate, if the public is listening, comments for the commission will be received until 5:00 PM on July 28th.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to, from the commission, Matt, can I start with you first?
Nothing, Dan.
Phil? I got nothing, okay. And then from staff, I don't know who wants to jump in first, but Marty?
I can start, Mr. Chair. So we are asking tonight, you'll remember at our last meeting, we submitted a draft of the annual planning report, and hopefully you've had a chance to look that over, and I haven't received any comments to the negative, so I'm assuming we're ready to go, but if we could have maybe some sort of an informal, I don't think a motion needs to be had, but some sort of an informal agreement that we'll put that forward and transmit it to the council for their information.
Sure.
And it will be available to the public.
And to be clear, this is the pretty version, right?
Yes.
The other version, the question, the formal version, that was submitted to the state, and we've hit that deadline, and that's off the list right now.
And I will mention, just along those lines, that the state was very, they called us the very next day. We were one of very few that had gotten it in already, and they were very happy with it, and as usual.
Ask them for one, one a year. How about a bonus? Okay, great. So is it, does anybody have any issues? I'd read through it last week.
I'm sure it's seen the final.
Good, all right. Go.
Thanks. And then the only other thing I have is, you just got an email today. We did get the planning awards out on the website. It's a little buried right now, we got to do some work to get it a little bit more prominent on the city's website, but we're working on that. But the link should be good, and we'll start blasting social media with that, and?
I already put it up on LinkedIn and everything, so it's good.
And hopefully, we can maybe get some Pokemon Go.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll work on getting that word out there.
Hopefully, that will die out all the time.
And that's all I've got.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else?
I have a couple of things, just by way of updates. In case you didn't know, the mayor and council did approve the rezoning of 700 Quince Orchard Road on Monday night. So that paves the way for a mixed-use development at the corner of Bank Street and Quince Orchard Road. Building permits have been issued.
I'm sorry to catch on, but that would mean, and the next step is really an SDP supplemental from the developer right now.
Yes, and we don't anticipate that terribly soon.
Okay.
Building permits have been issued for Camden and Washingtonian North, the big apartment building that's next to the Lifetime Fitness, and Firebird's Restaurant at Spectrum, so those will be moving forward.
Great.
Columbia Property Trust has sold the IBM property to the, an entity controlled by SunCap, which is developing the FedEx facility, for 48 million. Surprisingly high number. I think that's evidence that your decisions create a lot of value, so.
Was there ever any doubt?
I know.
Not just moral value?
Speaking of the Watkins Mill Interchange, Governor Hogan did make an official announcement on Monday. He was actually at Novavax here in Gaithersburg, but the announcement actually, I think, was made in Rockville. A total of $788 million in transportation improvements in Montgomery County, including 129.6 million for the Watkins Mill Interchange. Now, we think that is for three quadrants, not the four, full four quadrants, but the interchange is being designed such that the fourth quadrant can be added in the future. Timing is a little unclear, but the latest I heard was construction start in fall of 17, so we're hopeful in that.
More than a year off.
Right.
Okay.
La Casita Restaurant, which is in the former Roy's Place space, is open, so we're encouraging everybody to frequent that restaurant. And then finally, I wish Ruzali Wyk was here tonight, because Ruzali is the new chairman of the Kentlands Community Foundation, and the Kentlands Community Foundation is not the, I know you all know this, but is not the HOA for Kentlands. It is an organization, a philanthropic charitable organization that was set up at the very beginning of Kentlands, and it really has three missions, which are community-focused, cultural, and education on the new urbanism. And I was chair of the foundation for three years. All the chairs before and after me have struggled with how to really focus on the education piece, and Ruzali's really taking the bull by the horns, and she has, she is partnering with Gaithersburg Planning on a lecture series, the first of which we really did not participate in, but we were there, the Bob Gibbs Lecture that was in the spring. The second one, and the city manager has approved the use of the Arts Barn for this lecture series, which I think is a good thing. The second one will be Colin Green returning to Kentlands and to talk about the 2007 charrette, and kind of revisiting the 2007 charrette in 2016. I can't believe it's been nine years. So anyway, we're excited about that, and actually, we're shooting for the week of August 18th for that Colin Green lecture. Not crazy about that date, and I heard today that the Arts Barn has rehearsals going on, so we'll keep you posted on when it's going to happen.
Colin's going to entertain her, he'll work it in somehow.
That's right, that's right.
Good, all right.
And that's it.
Good news, thank you. All right, Trudy?
Okay, on August 1st, there is a joint public hearing on the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and also, that is the same night as the ad hoc committee presentation on the CPSC property. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for August 3rd, and then on Tuesday, September 6th, we also have a joint public hearing for the Stevenson property over off Metropolitan Road, and then our next meeting would be in September 7th.
What is the status? We had the work session, we've got the, let me back up. So the public hearing on the Historic Preservation Ordinance is not the master plan component that kicked off, right? Or is?
No, it's the, it's the actual ordinance in chapter 24.
Okay, so we, there was a kickoff on the Historic Preservation Guidelines, or Master Plan section, and on the Community Facilities section, or Parks and Recreation, excuse me, Parks and Recreation. Where do those stand in the timeline or in the process?
Parks and Recreation Plan is a little further ahead. Rob's working with that department, and they're plugging along, looking at a public forum-type meeting, open house type meeting later this summer, early fall, with some draft language. The Historic Preservation Master Plan is a little bit further behind, and we'll start in on that in earnest, you know, as the Parks and Rec Plan is getting finished up, so.
Okay, because the reason I ask is I know there's some others right behind it, like transportation, some other things, and so to, except we can, you know, keep the pace and get on to some of the other ones, that's, that's good to have in there, too.
Yep.
So things in the fall, maybe some meetings in the fall to start to see progress on that, you think?
Yeah, we've been working on a white paper, an economic relation with historic preservation white paper. That'll probably be the next thing that's finalized. That element needed to be done, working into the, to the master plan, the Historic Preservation Master Plan, so it is progressing. We are doing both of these projects solely in-house, there is no consultant help on those, so, you know, we're trying to fit them in where we can, and they are important elements. We are somewhat on purpose holding back on the transportation and land use to hopefully get some of these big-picture items such as BRT and the interchange, and some of those things that will have drastic impacts on our planning. You know, hopefully, those decisions can be made, and we can, we can develop a master plan that has the ramifications of those decisions built into it, so.
Okay. Good. Anything else? All right, have a good evening, we're adjourned.